Going to go ahead and call this June 3, 2019, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for attending this evening and participating in your local government. Alan, do you mind leading us in the pledge tonight? Thanks, Alan. We'll move on to item three of our agenda, which is communications from the public. If there's anything you wish to share with the council now would be your opportunity. Name and address for the record when you approach the podium. And if you are here to speak on our two public hearings, we'll wait to receive your comments until I call those individual public hearings later in the meeting. Any public comment tonight? Alan?
Hi, my name is Alan Went. I live at 940 Clark Drive. I just wanted to point out water not diverted, not used saves money on treatment, water treatment. It's also not treated at the wastewater treatment plant, so you're saving money in two spots there. Reduces greenhouse gases, reduces your carbon footprint. I also wanted to point out this ordinance is going to be what you would consider a living document. You're going to have chances to adapt it as necessary. I think we're going to find out this summer what works and what doesn't. It's important that you guys get it adopted as soon as necessary. It's one of the final pieces. We need to get the DEQ for them to lift the moratorium on your water connections. Lastly, I just want to say it's the right thing to do. It dovetails very nicely with the city's climate action plans and the city's goals. I just feel it, even though I'm heavily involved in it, I still feel that it's really beneficial to the city.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate the comments tonight.
Thank you.
Doug Pepmeyer, T and H Engineering, 450 Corporate Drive, Kalispell, Montana. And I'm here on behalf of item number seven. We are representing the clients for that subdivision there. So I just really wanted to let you guys know, we agree with staff's recommendations, and I'm here and available for any questions or comments you guys might have during that.
Great. We'll call you up if we have any. Thanks, Doug. Further public comment tonight?
Hi, my name is Mark Owens. I'm a Senior Director of Operations at Applied Materials. I'm here on behalf of primarily myself regarding the smell in sewer. And we live along the river, and I'm sure the city's heard through various means that the smell has gotten pretty bad. In fact, it's gotten worse than we've experienced over the last five years that we've been living in that location. Now, my background is operations. I'm an operations person. I've been an operations person for 18 years. Mechanical engineer is my degree. And I've actually talked to several people, not just the engineering community, but also some folks just that are around the area, in the lakes, in and around the facility in it. This year, by far, something is happening where it's not just a localized thing where the wind will catch the smell and it'll come down the river. It seems to be in two places at the same time. So across 93, at Super 1, I mean, all over. So there's something going on with the lagoons there that's clearly been an obvious issue to me. And I'm not sure why there aren't more people here really kind of identifying that. It seems like I've gotten comments from visitors that come to Applied Materials that have said, you know, "What's that smell? It's a beautiful city, but what's the smell?" It's a shame and embarrassing, frankly. So, as I mentioned, it seems that the intensity has increased over the years. In 2017, it seemed to be, again, a problem. And we, that is a man by the name of Ned Dixon or Nixon, he was involved in kind of coordinating some folks. And I think he went to the city to discuss options with a guy that came in, a biologist, I believe, that helped solve the problem for a period of time. In fact, what I'm also surprised about is that, you know, for 2018, it was actually good. We didn't smell anything. It was very, a non-eventful year in terms of the smell. So clearly, whatever was placed, was put in place at that time did seem to have an effect, and it did seem to take care of the issue. You know, obviously, since then, you know, in the early parts, usually I'd say March or April, we've gotten a smell here and there. But this year, it wasn't really that bad. In May, it was really bad. Twenty days I counted so far in May. And that wasn't just, as I mentioned, locally in and around our area, but I got in the car and drove around, and I could smell behind Super 1 and the areas back there. It appears to me, and this is, again, my personal opinion, that either the city's kind of let the guard down in terms of what's going on with this, hasn't reached out for help, doesn't necessarily have the escalation procedures in place to address the issue when they first smell it. Because the smell is an indication of, you know, bad results, really. Bad results, whether that's maintenance or whatever is going on with the lagoons. So I just suspect that this year, perhaps, we've gone back to business as usual. Things that have happened in 2017 are continuing to happen in 2019, which is a shame, again, for the city of Whitefish. So I have three requests. I'd like to, first of all, get acknowledgement from the city that the smell is out of control and that we have an issue that needs to be addressed and is not being addressed adequately in 2019. Second issue, I'd like to get a detailed plan of action to address the smell going forward. And I'd like to see that in the next council meeting. Because as we get into summer, it seems maybe the heat has some effect and also will cause more problems, certainly for the tourists, certainly for visitors that are coming in town. It's, again, it's embarrassing. And third, we'd like the city to fund, if they're not already doing so, and I don't know really what's happening there, but to fund adequate outside resources to help the issue. Because I truly believe, and in my business, when I have results problems, let's call them, immediately, I have a very good team of engineers that takes care of acknowledging that there's a problem and that they go need to, they need to go solve it. And if I don't have the resources at my beck and call, then we call in consultants, whatever we need to do to fix the issue. And it's a very straightforward way of dealing with it. There's no finger pointing. It's, you do it and you address it. But it gets addressed. And I just haven't heard that that's happening. So my, again, my suspicion is there's some management issue here, that something is not being managed. Because it's not being caught early enough in the year, it's not being addressed at a management level. And that's from my 18 years of experience in operations. That's what I suspect is happening. So I would also like to say that, you know, we've enjoyed our stay in Whitefish. And I, you know, we have a new development coming up in the back pasture, we call it, back behind the facility. And I just wonder, I mean, this is the low-cost housing group back there that they're putting up, I think, 60 units. This is right in ground zero of that area. And if we're not taking a proactive approach, if we're not seriously looking at what's happening from a management issue, either whether we have new equipment in 2000 or 2021 or not, it still can get out of control. And so if we don't have that DNA and we're not addressing the issues, then this can get out of control. And I just think if the city is hesitant to invest, I don't know what the consultant cost, that that alone, I mean, just if I was a developer and I was in that position with these 60 units, there would be lawsuits, right? And this is kind of where we're at right now. Because just one lawsuit will wipe that out completely. And I think it's up to the city to take this seriously and be able to address it at that level. Because, what is it, penny wise, pound foolish? If we don't address it, it can get tied up in the court, and then everybody loses. So, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Mark. Further public comment tonight? Bill?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you so much for your service. It's very much appreciated by all of us out there in Whitefish. I want to talk tonight about item E under the consent agenda. This is the ordinance adding, that is going to establish water conservation restrictions. I know enough about this to probably be dangerous, but I have studied this. And during my time on council, the whole storage issue up at the water treatment plant was an issue. We knew that this was something that was coming down the road, and it seems like it's now come to a head. I understand that there may be some other things at play here, not getting all the credit from the state for the amount of storage that we have. I think there's actually 4 million gallons, and they're only crediting us 3 million gallons. Whatever those nuances are, I don't think are critical and certainly not the point of what I want to talk about tonight. I think that the, we can be very thankful in Whitefish that it's not a water supply issue. The way I understand it, we have plenty of water. So that's, it's a management issue. It's an adminis, not, it's an infrastructure problem that we have to fix to get more water stored, whether that be the south end of town for fire flows, north end of town, whatever those, whatever the negotiations are going to be with the state should continue. If we were going to establish these conservation and these restrictions on the water, I would ask two things. Number one would be to make these restrictions temporary. When the deal gets finalized with the state, when the additional capacity is added, wherever that may be, that this gets looked at again and these restrictions get removed. Item number two would be, and this is a little bit more troubling to me, that in order to make these restrictions more restrictive, the way I read it was that the restrictions can be made more grave or more strict without another public hearing. And I think that if that were to be the case, that at a very minimum, there shouldn't be anything written into the ordinance that the restrictions can be heightened or added to without another public hearing. That it should be, again, just for the specific, for this specific purpose. We're not talking about the fact that we don't have enough water. We're talking about the fact that we don't, we're not managing it properly. So I urge you to remove this item from the consent agenda and revisit it. And thank you again.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate your comments tonight. Further public comment this evening? Not seeing any? We'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports from the audience? How about council? Richard?
Bike pad met this morning, and several projects are still in the boiler. Nothing really to report, other than the wayfinding signs for the Whitefish Trail through town, our bike pad trail, those will be complete on Wednesday, and then we can start installing them. The kicker is that every single sign requires you dig to visit the site, which is not a bad thing, but it will slow it down so that it's not just sticking a pole in the ground and attaching a sign. Craig reported also that painting and striping bike paths and crosswalks, he hopes to have accomplished this week. So as we move into more tourist activities, we should have that done. And there's some city beach loop trail maintenance that's underway. Actually, it's already, some of it's already done. That's it.
Great, thanks, Richard. Any further reports from the council? We did hold a Highway 93 South planning meeting this afternoon. It was fairly well-attended. I wanted to thank Hillary. She's doing just a great job on managing this project for the city. So far, we've held a public house and a visioning session, which I think went really well this past winter. It was held out on 93 South at one of the hotels. We've kind of bracketed the highway corridor into three different segments, referred to as A, B, and C. Today's meeting was focused on Section C, which is basically from Highway 40 South to Blanchard Lake. As you're aware of the council, when we reviewed our Extension of Services Plan, we reaffirmed our policy statement that we were not going to consider extending water and wastewater services, services south of Highway 40. That was actually a topic of discussion at today's meeting related to Segment C. We actually had Tom Gents come up from the city of Kalispell, and he gave a real interesting kind of history and some of the difficult lessons that Kalispell's learned over the years with regards to annexations and extension of services. And what was really surprising to me is that they've taken a very aggressive approach to annexation in order to help guide growth rather than have to respond to it when it's approaching their border. Right now, their Extension of Services Plan in Kalispell extends north of Church Drive, just to give you some perspective, which was a little surprising to me. I'm not advocating for us to reconsider this policy at tonight's meeting, but you will be receiving a recommendation from the Steering Committee when we wrap up our business next March. So I just wanted you to start thinking about that policy again as we move down the road. And our next meeting is July 8, 2019. And then we're going to set Hillary free, and she's going to go to writing for a few months, and then we'll reconvene in the fall. But again, great job to Hillary and staff for leading this effort. I think it's going to be a great document for the city that'll hopefully revitalize and help redevelop the 93 South corridor. That's all I had. Anything further from council? Not seeing any? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Actually, excuse me, we do have Resolution 19-10. Coincidentally, a resolution amending Resolution Number 18-09 to extend the duration of the Highway 93 South Corridor Plan Steering Committee through March 31, 2020, and we will need a motion to that effect. Katie?
I move to approve Resolution 19-10, a resolution amending Resolution Number 18-09 to extend the duration of Highway 93 South Corridor Plan Steering Committee through March 31, 2020.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign. And that carries unanimously, Michelle, which now brings us on to item five, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the April 20, 2019, meeting minutes or special session minutes?
Yes.
Richard?
On the minutes, April 20, page 22, excuse me, page 21, under appointments, that was Edna White, not Edna White Fish. So that's the only change I have for that.
Thank you, Richard. Any comments on the consent agenda?
I do. I would move to ask that we pull Ordinance 19-11 and pull Ordinance 19-12 for further discussion.
And that does not require a second. We'll go ahead and pull Ordinance 19-11, which is item 5D of the agenda, as well as Ordinance 19-12, which is item 5E. Richard, I'm going to turn it back to you. I'd like to, excuse me?
May I also request that we remove Ordinance 19-10 from the consent agenda as well?
So moved. We will remove item 5C as well, which is Ordinance 19-10, related to the Whitefish Legacy Homes program, and that will be on a second reading this evening. We'll start with Richard. Richard, is it your preference to start with item 5D, then we can proceed with 5E? And we'll turn it back to Frank for discussion on 19-10, which is item 5C. If and when we have edits, modifications to those ordinances made, we'll have to take a formal vote on those before acting on the original motion, which is to approve the consent agenda. Or I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Richard?
My big concern on D would be on page, there it is, page 77. The notifications are by regular mail, 15 working days prior to the issuance of a permit. It seems to me that 15 days is just essentially somebody's two-week vacation, and since it's regular mail, they may miss it, depending upon when the mail comes and weekends and one thing and another. I don't know how council would feel about extending that to 21 days. I think that...
I would move to approve that amendment.
And I don't know if staff wants to communicate on that issue or not.
Wendy?
15 working days is three weeks.
Monday through Friday.
Would be five, yeah.
Five, 10, 15.
It'd be three weeks.
Oh, okay.
It's working days, so.
I did not get quite through to working.
Because you're retired.
I know. So I'll withdraw that on 15 days. So that was the only real issue I had with...
Withdrawing that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Has anybody else, I don't know if anybody else has a comment? And then on ordinance, on the water and sewer, there were a couple of things. Let's see, that's going to be at page 80. I'm actually up on page 82, under general conservation. It just needs some rework in terms of wordsmithing. Item three, under restrictions, watering must not result in coverage of pavement areas. Resulting, I think, is the answer we need there. Strike of, change result to resulting, and excessive, and make it excessive, not excess, runoff. You okay with that, Craig? Then on page 83, I hate to be the word police, but under trigger points, item B, the word says stage two, extreme water shortage, critical water supply, infrastructure failure, or portions of all of Flathead County in exceptional, rather than exception, drought. And I had a question that I got a wonderful explanation for, and I just wanted to share that if I could, or Craig can, that watering being prohibited on Mondays, and the question was why Mondays? And do you want me to have added, or you want to? I think the public should know that.
I understand. I'd love to hear your analysis of how I described it to you.
It appears that Mondays are the biggest water day use in Whitefish. And it's probably because during the summer, people are coming in from camping and doing all the things that they do. And the hotels, motels are washing all of the linens and towels and things, and all of a sudden, our water usage goes up on those natural usages. And so that would restore some of the water usage, or at least carrying capacity in our plant. How'd they do, Craig?
Well done.
Thank you.
Any additional amendments, Richard? Clarifications?
No.
Okay. I'm going to speak briefly to this ordinance that we'll be considering as part of the consent agenda. Bill made an interesting point about, I don't know if he's here anymore, but about storage capacity, and it's not a storage capacity issue that we're dealing with at the plant, it's a treatment capacity issue. Right now, we do have the capability, if I'm not mistaken, Craig, to treat and distribute up to 4 million gallons per day. Unfortunately, DEQ only gives us credit for three out of the 4 million gallons per day, which is above their heads even. I want to make sure that the public understands that we're taking very proactive steps to address this issue. Number one, the Public Works Department has been actively replacing antiquated cast iron water mains throughout town. Just a couple of years ago, we documented that about over 25% to 30% of the water that's actually treated at the plant and distributed to town has actually lost, you know, due to leaky cast iron water mains. So we've been aggressively replacing mains the last couple of years, and I believe Craig's indicated that we've probably reduced that water loss by about 50%. So we're still aggressively pursuing that program into this coming year. We're also, of course, you know, bringing on this evening, we hope, a consulting firm to help evaluate our treatment plant, in particular, looking to increase treatment capacity at the water plant. We envision that these upgrades will probably take on the order of the next, you know, three to five years. And at that point, we should be well above the 3 million gallon per day threshold, probably in the 7 to 8 million gallon per day capacity range. So this issue we're dealing with this evening or this summer, from our perspective, it's a short-term issue that we hope to put to bed. Many of you have commented, you know, basically that you'd like to see some of these regulations lifted when we do address the issue. We already have restrictions or the ability of our Public Works Director to initiate restrictions on water use within our current city code. All we're doing this evening is actually clarifying what triggers a stage one and stage two restriction and what those appropriate measures are. In addition to what I've explained, we're also working on developing and citing a new storage tank on the south end of town to help with fire flow pressure as well as water distribution. And we have a consulting firm actively working on that project as well. So just wanted to get that out there. There's been a lot of rumors and concerns floating around town that I've certainly heard of. This is a high priority for the city. We feel that implementing these measures, at least in the short term, is just the right thing to do and the right thing to do to conserve water during those times when it is indeed limited. Those are my comments on the water conservation ordinance. And I believe now, Frank, would you like to address Ordinance 19-10?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend Section 11-1-A6, A2 to...
Page?
Excuse me, just one moment. Let me get over here. It is page 41 of your packet. And what I'd like this to, the purpose of this amendment is to eliminate the five-foot increase in maximum building height in the WB3 zone only. The purpose of this, if we don't do that, we now allow, we would then be allowing up to 50-foot buildings in our downtown area, and I don't think anybody wants that or really anticipated that, given what's already available to those in the B3. Putting three stories on a building is not a problem, which is the reason that they add the five feet in some of the other zones where we're going to add, have this. So I would move that we amend that Section 2 with the following phrase, except in the WB3 general commercial district zoning district.
Is there a second to that friendly amendment?
I'll second that.
Wendy, any comments on this suggested text edit? Any concerns? Further discussion on the motion? Is everyone clear with the motion? Katie?
I don't know if that... And you only want to do it in WB3, not B2?
Oh, no, it's the WB, yeah, WB3, yeah. So in WB2, I'm not too concerned about it.
Just for the audience, FYI, what Frank's referring to is right now in the downtown business district, you're allowed to go up to 45 feet if you step back 20 feet from the property line. So our building height standards in the WB3 and perhaps throughout most of town, or actually throughout most of town, is 35 feet. And we're allowing through our housing program up to a five... And we've, we're allowing through our, um, housing program, uh, up to a five-foot increase in building heights to help with architectural, um, embellishments, I should say, uh, just to break up, um, some of the roof pitches and allow some additional creativity from an architectural standpoint. Frank's motion essentially would, would still cap the downtown, uh, building heights at forty-five feet by not allowing that additional five foot, which I think was well articulated by Frank. Is there any further discussion on that friendly amendment to ordinance nineteen dash ten? We'll vote on the friendly amendment first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, which I now need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended, and please reference, uh, the specific ordinances that were amended, which would be nineteen dash ten and nineteen dash twelve, please. Richard?
I'll move, uh, to approve the consent agenda, uh, including nine, uh, ordinance nineteen ten as amended and nineteen eleven, no, excuse me, nineteen twelve-
Twelve.
As amended.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and the motion does carry unanimously on our consent agenda as amended. That brings us quickly on to our two public hearings this evening. We have item six A, which is a consideration of a request from Betsy and Don Constam for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at five seven three Summers Avenue. This is, uh, area zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district. Wendy?
It is on. Um, okay, so the request you have before you is a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment at five seventy-three Summers Avenue. Um, this will be located behind an existing single-family residence above a proposed new two-car garage at the rear of the property. The building will meet all setbacks, size, and height requirements, and access off the alley to the east. The property is, um, almost eight thousand square feet, again, developed with a single-family home. It is on WR2. It has an urban land use designation. It's served by all public services and facilities. Um, we noticed adjacent landowners, advisory agencies placed illegal in the pilot, and we did receive one comment, um, with someone who's concerned about the setbacks and the parking for this type of project. Um, the proposed use complies with the growth policy designation, the zoning. It's meeting all of the zoning requirements for this. Again, access will be off the alley. There's no environmental constraints. There's adequate space for the three parking spaces required. It's served by a city water and sewer. Um, traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal, and the apartment will meet the lock coverage and height standards. It's accessory to the main single-family home. Um, all the setbacks can be met on the site, and this neighborhood is, uh, predominantly single-family. There are some multifamily units to the east and a smattering of, uh, accessory apartments throughout the neighborhood. The planning board held a public hearing on May sixteen. The applicant's representatives spoke, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously, um, of the eleven conditions. They're kind of the standard ones you guys see for the accessory apartment, including the deed restriction, no short-term rentals, and they have to get going here in the next eighteen months. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy on her staff report? Richard?
I think it will probably be for Ben, something that came up at planning board, and that just needs more clarification. I think, I think it'll be Ben. If not, we'll come back.
Okay. Thanks, Wendy. We did advertise for a public hearing on, uh, item six A of our agenda. Is the applicant present tonight, and would, that applicant? Would you like to add anything, sir, or Ben? Thanks.
Good evening. Ben Davis, eight-three-zero Edgewood Place, and I'm here, I'm working with Betsy and Dan on the construction of their garage apartment. Uh, I, hopefully this is a fairly routine application. It is, uh, fairly standard ADU. Um, I know the owners are happy with the conditions as written by staff, uh, so they're looking forward to adding another long-term rental to our inventory here in town. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ben. Richard?
Yeah, at planning board, Ben, there was some discussion, I think I probably brought it up, uh, about the way that the snow would shed to the south side into that fourteen-foot parking space, and that you would during the winter probably, or may lose that if you didn't have snow storage and a way to remove. Uh, have you done any further work architecturally to, to at least address that issue?
Sure. Uh, I don't think we've, we haven't finalized any building plans for this project to this point. Um, I know we can address that on the building side by making sure that deck is strong enough to, uh, not just carry the weight of the people that might be on it, but also any falling snow. Um, and, uh, I don't have a more detailed answer for you than that, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also concerned that, on the south side, if you have a, a roof that sheds into that, there's a fourteen-foot, I think, parking space-
Mm-hmm.
-that was required, um, that you would lose that in the winter, but you haven't firmed up those plans yet.
We have not yet firmed up those plans.
Yeah.
But I know that, um, your feedback then and now is definitely, uh, on our mind, and, um, we'll, we'll try to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Right.
Thanks. Thanks, Ben. Appreciate your comments tonight. Any public testimony on this item? Any public testimony? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Ryan?
I would move to approve a request from Betsy and Dan Constam for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at five seventy-three Sum- Summers Avenue, zoned WR2, two-family residential district, WCUP nineteen dash zero five.
Thanks, Ryan. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henan Hartman, excuse me. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that passes unanimously. Michelle? We'll move on to item six B of our agenda, which is ordinance nineteen dash thirteen, an ordinance adding two new sections to title eleven zoning regulations, chapter three, special provisions of Whitefish City Code with development standards for multifamily developments as well as mixed use and non-residential developments, and this will be on a first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, yeah, this is a, a proposed text amendment that would modify the code to add a new section within our special provisions chapter, and that special provisions chapter is the chapter that has, uh, more detailed criteria for certain types of things like conditional uses, um, as well as things like stor-, you know, storage containers and fences. So these are standards that apply in the zoning code to all developments that it applies to. So in this particular case, we're gonna be adding more stringent review criteria for new multifamily apartment development, as well as commercial mixed use or non-residential or business park-type development. And these new criteria would be certain things like building orientation, uh, protection of natural features, landscaping and parking lot standards, open space requirements, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, as well as, uh, neighborhood scale and compatibility. So this is something that came out of our, um, legacy homes program. Um, one of the things that we did within that, uh, code was that we lowered the threshold of conditional use permits and when they might be required. And we also, um, increased the use of, uh, administrative conditional uses. And so as a companion to that, we're providing these additional regulations that will strengthen, um, those reviews and allow both the staff as well as the planning board and the city council to have some additional ammunition for these types of projects to be able to make sure that they're designed properly and that they, um, really look at and are compatible with the neighborhoods that they go in. So in this particular case, um, we have some issues in the past with the architectural review committees getting approvals of things after the conditional use permits approved, where, um, when someone submits a plan for a conditional use permit, the site plans included as well as a lot of the building design, um, that goes through the planning board, and the council gets approved, and then they end up with a site plan that maybe needs to be modified, but it's already been approved by the city council. And so this allows us to get ahead of the curve. Um, and we sat down and worked with the architectural review committee, talked to them about some of the standards that they'd like to see looked at upfront. Um, and so we put together these particular standards. There's some additional standards that they're gonna look at, um, adding to their code, uh, that will help with, uh, multifamily buildings as well as townhomes, um, and some other things that they're working on currently. But this will allow, uh, some of the standards that they are reviewing to be looked at ahead of time so that it makes their job a lot easier when it gets to the architectural review committee. So these particular standards, we're gonna, uh, be used when we review conditional use permits, planning unit developments, as well as building permits and site plans that don't go through a discretionary review. Um, the things that don't go through a discretionary review, uh, review, like a building permit, we can't really, um, place specific conditions on, although we can make sure that those, they meet the criteria, uh, before they're approved. So these standards will apply to all new multifamily, which is three or more dwelling units, uh, mixed-use developments, which has a commercial and residential component in one building, as well as non-residential building development. So within the multifamily development standards, and the staff reports on page one thirty-nine of your packet, if you're following along, um, one of the main things that we're looking at is, uh, building orientation and standards for multiple buildings on one site, and one of the requirements would be that multiple, uh, multifamily buildings have to be designed to orient to public streets and to provide very distinct bicycle and pedestrian and vehicular connections to the existing neighborhoods. And then within the code, we provide some techniques that they can apply with that. Um, using a modified street grid system, where most buildings in a project front on a street, and then where no public streets exist, that they would create a, a grid street system within a project. And this is, is specific to multifamily developments. If you have multiple apartment buildings, these are the requirements that we're gonna look at. Um, parking areas have to be located behind or under buildings, and such, uh, parking areas will be accessed from alley-type driveways. Um, if they have existing, uh, uses next door, shared driveways between adjacent uses are preferred, um, providing building with direct and distinct pedestrian access from the main street fronting the building, as well as the back where the parking's located, and then designing, uh, alternate and separate routes that clearly define the bicycle and pedestrian areas versus the areas for vehicles. As far as the multiple, um, building design, again, um, if there's more than one building in one lot, we have some criteria in the code for that, but we also are gonna require that buildings exhibit a similar scale and orientation and proportion, um, that unify their natural and built features. The taller buildings need to be placed towards the interior of the site and stepped, stepped back from the street, and then the buildings have to be grouped or sided so they can create some distinct outdoor spaces. Um, and then connecting to natural corridors and trail systems and facilitating pedestrian and bicycle traffic. As far as parking lot design, we're adding some standards for that, um, so that those things would be, um, located and screened, um, creating few interruptions on the street or sidewalk or building facade. They have to provide bicycle storage and parking, um, locating the surface parking lots at the rear of the side of lots, breaking large parking lots into small ones, um, that provides easy access for pedestrians, minimizing the number of driveways and curb cuts, shared driveways with adjacent property owners, um, and locating them so that they're less visible from the street and less visually dominant as part of the landscape, and then screening parking areas from adjacent single-family residences with landscaping, berming, or natural material, and then, uh, limiting the parking lots on any street frontage to thirty percent of the overall street frontage. And then we add some additional standards for parking lot lighting. Um, I just wanna note that some of these standards, while, um, our climate action plan, um, and we're looking towards LED lighting, um, there's been a lot of studies nationwide that show that some LEDs are very harmful and actually brighter than other types. So we set some, some standards in the types of LED lighting with the warm white filtered, um, which is the, the standard to be the most pleasing and beneficial for people's eyes. Um, secure short-term bicycle parking must be provided in a convenient location. Um, we have some requirements for fences and walls, minimizing the need for them. Um, additional requirements for site lighting, uh, for things like tot lots, mailboxes, bus stops, recycling areas, um, and sort of minimum lighting for those for safety purposes. Um, directing lighting away from neighboring development. We have some standards for, um, convenient access to the nearest transit stops, other standards for support facilities like trash receptacles. Um, as far as site requirements, we have some grading and, uh, tree retention standards, that the multifamily project must be designed to minimize impacts to existing topography and vegetation. They can, um, required to incorporate natural grades into the overall design, um, existing trees and vegetation, uh, minimal disturbance of open space, um, and then avoiding placing buildings on, uh, ridge tops if they're up on a hill. And then as far as open space for these multifamily projects, um, in the past, only with a planning unit development do we set aside a specific amount of open space requirement. But as you know, with a, a multifamily development, often a lot of children live in those things, so we're setting a requirement for a minimum of ten percent open space that they'd have to, uh, put on the site for a multifamily development project. And then they have some, um, standards in here for techniques to comply with that by combining open space of contiguous properties, citing, uh, recreation equipment away from storm drainage facilities, using walkways to connect the open space to the buildings and parking areas, um, and incorporating activities in those things for all age groups, and then, um, visually shielding private outdoor spaces such as yards, decks, and patios so that people that live in those things have some sense of privacy. Um, and then probably the most important aspect of this is the neighborhood scale. So the requirement would be to the extent reasonable and practical, and that's specifically because all different types of buildings are different and different situations are different. Um, it's really gonna depend on the context of the neighborhood and where something like this is located. Um, but they must be compatible with and, and complement the architectural character of the neighboring buildings. So some of the techniques for complying with that would be breaking a multifamily building into house-sized building elements, especially where there's a building height transition from adjoining development, and then using existing separation patterns and orientation of buildings, um, to establish the pattern of new developments. Uh, and then we provided some, some examples in there that, um, people can look at to get an idea of what we're talking about by those specific standards. Articulation and modulation of buildings and roof lines reduces the perceived bulk and scale, and then designing multifamily buildings to step back from abutting lower-density properties so that better fits into, uh, existing neighborhoods. Moving on to the mixed-use and non-residential standards, so these are, um, for mixed-use buildings, this is the things that would happen in commercial zoning districts. Um, this potentially could also be in a, a multifamily district if it's on along a major arterial where offices might be allowed. So, um, again, we have some building orientation and multi-building site requirements, that they must be oriented towards the primary street frontage and public paths and sidewalks. Buildings on corner lots should be oriented by, uh, to the primary intersection where they front one or more streets. The building must be no, located no more than twenty-five feet from the primary street frontage. That pushes the buildings closer to the streets and make them more pedestrian, um, oriented. And then there are some exceptions if there's a green belt requirement, such as in the WB2, um, they just need to be as close as possible to the green belt, and then accessory buildings, obviously wouldn't apply to that. Um, and then we have some standards on, uh, vehicle access and drive-through. And then, um, one of the requirements would be arranging the buildings on the site so that their orientation frames and closes or otherwise gives prominence to the pedestrian corridor, and then requiring an outdoor gathering space with outdoor seating, a main street, or pedestrian or vehicle access corridor within the site, um, so that it brings the, um, pedestrians into the, the site facility. Buildings on corner lots have to be, uh, oriented towards the primary intersection, um, while parking and auto access must be located away from the primary intersection corners. And then, uh, use of corner entrances, plazas, signage, or landscaping is encouraged to accentuate particular sites that are on a corner. As far as building separation, where there's a, uh, separated from a public sidewalk along the primary street frontage, the space should contain public and pedestrian amenities, so things like benches, um, sculptures, features, landscaping, places to invite people into plazas. Um, buildings must be separated from the sidewalk, again, by plazas, landscaping benches, bicycle racks, trash cans, and other pedestrian amenities. And then we have some standards for multiple building design. Often we see these commercial developments with multiple buildings on one site. Um, some of that's to, um, you know, reduce the scale of development so it's not one larger building. Um, so the standards for these types of things, they would, uh, once again, exhibit a familiarity, familiarity or similarity of scale, orientation, proportion, so they kinda, all the buildings look similar but not exactly alike, um, grouped or sided with other buildings to create distinct outdoor spaces, um, and connect to the natural corridors and trail systems. Um, again, similar language on the topography, protecting existing trees and natural features, um, incorporating landscaping into design with techniques to do that. Um, we're also adding some techniques to add landscaping in zones that don't require it, or places that have zero lotline development like the B3, so providing frameworks such as trellises and arbors for plants, planter guards, retaining walls, um, upper-story planter boxes, green roofs, or gardens, um, and then incorporating outdoor furniture with the landscaping plan. Requirements for off-street parking lots, again, desire, uh, designed to minimize the impact of parking on the building's relationship to the street, so located to the side or the rear of buildings, not located between the building and the primary street frontage, occupying, the parking must occupy no more than thirty percent of the primary street frontage, no more than seventy-five percent of any secondary street frontage for corner lots. Um, some language about parking lot lighting, again, some of those LED standards so that, um, we meet, match our, um, climate action plan requirements. Um, adjacent developments are required to link parking areas where physically possible, and that provides baggage roads so that people that are driving to different businesses don't have to go back out on the highway or other major arterials- don't have to go back out on the highway or other major arterials, but they can travel from parking lot to parking lot. Vehicle circulation on-site is organized to facilitate movement in and out of the parking areas, and align intersections whenever practical for interior driveways. Locating, using low-impact development techniques for stormwater management, and then some short-term bicycle storage requirements, that's something we haven't had a standard for in the past. This is for commercial uses, so they'd be required to have actual number of parking spaces, so one bicycle space for every four dwelling units and/or ten percent of the number of required vehicle parking spaces, whichever is greater, with a minimum of two spaces. So that would be a requirement to have bicycle parking at all new, non-residential development. There's a standard in here, it's one of the things with parking lots, and as part of the climate action plan, is reducing surface area of parking lots and impervious surface. We found some codes that actually encourage people, if they're building new on-street parking, now, this doesn't apply to existing on-street parking, but if they're adding new on-street parking, then they can reduce their parking requirement by one parking space for each newly developed on-street parking space. And then allowing for ADA parking spaces to potentially be on the street and not just in the parking area, if it's better serves the public. And then specifics for bike and pedestrian accommodations, providing walkways between buildings, minimizing interruptions of sidewalks, providing access between commercial sites and adjacent areas, again, bicycle locking racks that support the whole frame, not just the front wheel. And then, as far as mixed-use and non-residential development, adjacent to residential zones, we have some standards now for that that we're including in here. So the buildings must be designed to ensure that building massing, height, and scale provide sensitive transitions to adjoining residential neighborhoods. When abutting a residential district, their landscaping plan must include provisions for screening between the project and the residential property. New developments adjacent to residential areas must mitigate impacts through careful site planning and architectural design, and we provide some different mitigation techniques. So that would be locating the open space and existing vegetation on the site's furthest edge to separate the building from less intensive uses, stepping down the massing of the building along the site's edge, eliminating the length or articulating building facades to reflect adjacent residential patterns of design, and then the creative use and maintenance of landscaping such as buffers, berms, rockeries, fences, in order to break up that building and to buffer it from the adjacent neighboring property owners. Again, some language about support elements such as more storage containers and those things are located. So that's sort of the gist of the code that we're proposing. These are things that are supported by our growth policy. A section of our growth policies under future land use goal one states that preserve and enhance the character qualities of small-town feel of the Whitefish community through innovative and comprehensive growth management systems, protect and preserve the special character scale and qualities of existing neighborhoods, while supporting and encouraging attractive, well-designed neighborhood-compatible infill development, promoting infill downtown where building height and massing shall be consistent with the scale of existing structures, and then preserving existing neighborhoods with the character scale qualities through character-based standards, and these are what we would consider character-based standards. So, staff put these together, and we sent them to the planning board with a recommendation of approval. The Whitefish City Planning Board held public hearings on April 18th and then also continued it to May 16th. Several people of the public spoke with some concerns as well as some support for it. After the public comments, the board made a motion to approve it, and it passed unanimously with one friendly amendment, which was a typo. It's probably not important to discuss, it was a minor typo. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this item? Frank.
Dave, how was this put together? Was this put together by effectively a committee? Is this something that's been vetted like the entire Legacy Homes program? I mean, how did we come to this point with this ordinance?
So this is something that wasn't, didn't go through the Legacy Homes Steering Committee, and was sort of a separate item, because we were frantically trying to get that together, but we felt this was an important piece that needed to be included with this.
Right.
So it's something that, you know, I put together with the rest of the staff using some model ordinances that were out there. I bounced some of the things off some people in the development community to get some feedback. We did, you know, some of the people on the Fort Housing Steering Committee, you know, reviewed it. We used the planning board as a sounding board, you know, two meetings of them, tried to get as much stuff as we could put together, that we feel like, you know, there are very important things that we can add to the code. We did bring it to the Architectural Review Committee and got their feedback on it, and made several changes based on their ideas.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for Dave? Richard?
Dave, on page 115, A2. I understand ensure new multifamily development is compatible with, but I don't understand the enhances the character of our neighborhoods. How does it enhance? Can you?
Well, I mean, buildings that are consistent with a neighborhood, that have some of the same qualities, some of the same architectural features, rather than being a detriment to those neighborhoods, they'd be compatible with or potentially enhanced. I mean, I don't know that every new building is going to enhance it, but that's the standard, you know, the, our best hope for something, that it would enhance the neighborhood rather than be detrimental or retract from it.
And then, does that show up as a finding?
As far as the criteria when we review it?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, currently, we have the conditional use permit standards that we have to review it on that look at neighborhood compatibility and scale, conformance with the growth policy. I think there's four or five things that every conditional use permit review, and then as well, we would go through all these standards to review, and then we have to show and demonstrate how they meet these things in the code, which shows, you know, requires neighborhood compatibility. So, I mean, again, enhancement might be somewhat of a subjective criteria in some instances. Some people might think it enhances, other people might not like the fact that there's additional traffic, even if the building's attractive. So, I mean, you're never going to make everybody happy, and so, again, enhancement's a little bit subjective.
The point I'm trying to get to is, when a neighborhood objects to something in that new construction in their neighborhood, multifamily in their neighborhood, which I'm sure will, probably not sure will happen, but could well happen. How does a person in the public respond, and then how does the city respond?
You know, I think it's much like, you know, as far as you guys is making decision-making, you know, we have review criteria that we go through, we're looking at, you know, the compatibility. You know, obviously, the neighbors will have an opportunity, whether in writing to staff, if it's administrative CUP, or to the council, or if there's instances where, you know, there's things that can't be addressed by staff, we're going to bump those things up to the city council for you guys to make the decision, if there's enough public outcry. And some, you know, it's going to really just be a matter of looking at it, maybe potentially whoever the designer is, making modifications to the building so that it's more compatible. But not in every case are we going to have a clear dividing line saying this enhances things, and thumbs up on that and thumbs down on that. I mean, it's a lot of things are, you know, it really depends on the context.
But often, when something gets approved, the architectural rendering is not what actually is going to appear on the lot or will change between approval, architectural review, and then, once that's all done with, the neighbors may still be up in arms.
You know, there's sometimes, I mean, again, once it goes through the initial process, it's not always a super detailed building design, because they're not going to put the money into, you know, spending, you know, two hundred dollars an hour on an architect until they know they have an approval. And so, a lot of times, things do get modified between the approval and when it goes to the Architectural Review Committee. Once the Architectural Review Committee signs off on it, and we're trying to make a better effort to make sure what gets approved with regard to the colors and the design is actually what gets built, you know, there's been, you know, some concerns in the past, there's a couple buildings where something changed, you know, during the construction phase that we didn't catch during that, and so we're trying to make a better effort to make sure that when someone gets an approval, that they stick to what the Architectural Review Committee, you know, approved. But, you know, there's cases where some things, you know, slip by when there's a last-minute change on the site, but, again, we're trying to improve that process.
Okay.
Further questions for Director Taylor?
It's a typo on page 158, if you want it.
Please.
Under zoning-only setback requirements, the second paragraph where it says new special provisions, separate bike and ped routes in, comma, create, there's just a little bit of wordsmithing that has to be...
Well, that's not part of the ordinance, that's just a sheet that we put together to answer some questions and concerns that came up.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's basically the special provisions we're talking about. You know, site design that we have, you know, I just read that section of this, but, you know, that there needs to be an internal street grid and pedestrian access through the, through the requirement. Not all those sentences are complete sentences, I think that's what your point is, but yeah.
Okay.
It was just a summary of things, so.
Good try.
All right, I've got more.
Further questions before we go to a public hearing? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be our own ordinance 19-13. Is there any public comment tonight on this item? Mary? Richard?
So, Mary Flowers with Community Unity Consulting, representing myself and others within the community. I want to begin by acknowledging the planning staff's responses to the questions I raised at the planning board in regards to the proposed code amendment before you tonight, and those are in your packet tonight. Unfortunately, these responses to my comments were only posted after the deadline for public comment for your packet, and I was not able to get you additional public comment for your packet, which I realize you prefer, but your public process makes this impossible when it only comes out in your packet the day those comments are due. What I think the staff review of the existing standards and additional standards before you tonight is that there are new standards that do not offer significant differences from the standards that are already in place in the city. I think they, it's a important step, but I don't think it's enough for, given the rapid growth and the development that Whitefish is seeing, taking time to get these standards and related standards, including landscaping, open space, way back in the PUD committee, we talked about open space definitions needed to be revised and changed. And again, planning staff is saying, well, it's what we've got, we haven't done it yet. I think now's the time to do things like that and to make sure we have a comprehensive review. Historic preservation is an issue. You've talked about updating the Architectural Review Standards. All of this is needed to provide the cross-referencing and a better level of detail that results in the quality of new development that retains the character and appeal of Whitefish. The guidance that you adopted when you updated the downtown, Whitefish Downtown Master Plan in 2018, I think should inform your decision tonight, particularly on whether or not you simply move forward with this, or you step back and do some additional review of it. As was clarified by the staff, this didn't go through public process outside of the planning board in this meeting tonight. You didn't hold a workshop on it. There hasn't been a committee that was set up, and if you look at, and what I've done is just cut and paste it in, the standards for the downtown master plan, and one of those goals that you set, it should include input from steering committee comprised of stakeholders and citizens at large, and this wasn't done. Would require consultant services to facilitate the process and provide a draft document for refinement and finalization by city staff. These standards are too important for the city not to engage a professional consultant who can bring focused attention and broad experience to help us as the city chooses what's best for Whitefish. You had your planning director saying tonight, they were scrambling just to get you the affordable housing policy before you, and so they just did this quickly in-house. I don't think it meets the standards that the city needs. Should the downtown plan calls, should include new guidelines for development of projects within the public realm, streets, parks, open space, and again, there are a lot of issues here that need to be addressed. Streets, for example, while the planning staff suggests that on-street parking will reduce impervious surface, I think when you look at what's happening, like at the old hospital site, where they reduced their parking significantly by putting part of that on-street, you just created more impervious surface with building space. There's nothing in this that by moving that parking onto the street ensures you're going to reduce impervious surface, and so, you know, there are contradictions like that that just need more careful review. It should support supplementary overlay zones and review perceived linkages to parallel applicable regulations of the zoning overlay. I think it's time to really look at the fact that development in some areas of the city need different standards, and others in overlay districts can help you accomplish that with some of your standards. You already set a goal in the adoption of that 2018 downtown master plan to, with one year, to begin to redo the development standards for that area. I think it would be reasonable to expand the scope of that work and look at the downtown and the other areas that encompass this type of development, so I'd encourage you to think about that. One additional point I think your leadership and more public input is needed on is the policy recommendations in this document that suggests the city needs to span commercial districts throughout the city, as in the new policy on page nine of this proposal, which I've copied below. I'm suggesting that number four be deleted. I think it's really clear and existent with our growth policy that what we don't want to see is a competition with our downtown core area with retail services being scattered throughout the city. We dealt with that discussion in the PUD committee as well. I just think it keeps coming back and being inserted into these documents, and I don't think that that has the support of community residents to see this continued insertion of retail down the corridor. Also, I didn't have this in here, but the ten percent open space on multifamily, as Dave pointed out, when those are PUDs, it's thirty percent. Again, because you've basically removed the incentives to use a PUD, I think you really need to look at that ten percent if it's really adequate for multifamily development in the community. Finally, I think the sentiments that were expressed by city resident Pat LaTirel in a recent letter to you, which got buried, and I raised this at the last council meeting, I think it's a poor practice because the public doesn't ever see this, it was buried in the back of your May 20th packet after that packet was first put out. And it reflects public feedback that I hear increasingly. It reflects the urgency that I and others feel... It reflects the urgency that I and others feel that it is time to slow down and get policies such as this right and do more to engage the public in these processes. The treatment I received at the planning board when I attempted to present comments on this topic is enough to discourage the thickest-skinned advocate to conclude that public input is not meaningfully considered or encouraged. And you can simply watch the tape for that to see what I had to put up with. I have copied segments of Pat's letter here. I'm writing this, and I want to just read into the record a little bit of this. Pat said, "I'm writing this letter to highlight what I feel are some disturbing decisions that are negatively affecting Whitefish. I've lived here since 1975, I've served on the council, worked for the school system, I served on the FVCC Foundation Board, and I still run businesses here. But today, I feel Whitefish's under your watch is being run for those who can afford to throw money at a cause rather than giving time and thought. I'm talking about the part-timers. We are losing the community aspect of this town and the generations and heart of why I and many others moved here so many years ago. If all we become is a resort town, then we have lost our way." And then she concludes by saying she addressed other issues in the water ordinance, which I'm sure you've read. "I would hope that the current city council consider all options very carefully. Whitefish is close to losing its neighborhoods to homes that are not occupied but only a couple of months a year. A town that has no heart or no soul becomes less attractive to those who have money to find new vacation homes or to young people who want to settle here and start a family." Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Further public testimony tonight on this item? Further comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to table this item to date certain in the future when I think we can all become a little more educated as to whether or not this particular ordinance actually fixes or addresses the issues that are being identified with multifamily development, and particularly with the inclusionary zoning that we've included that could provide thirty-five to forty-foot buildings right next to, literally, fifteen-foot, twenty-foot bungalow that's right next door. I'm not sure we've fully addressed, based on what I was able to pick up through my reading and David's recitation.
Frank, if you don't mind, let's get a second on that before discussion. Is there a second on Frank's motion, which I would recommend or suggest, Frank, that we postpone? And you indicated a date certain. Would you like to specify that date as part of your motion? Our next meeting is on the seventeenth, and the meetings in July are July first and July fifteenth.
I will say July first, I'm not sure what our work session agendas are like between now and then.
Adam?
I know we have a work session next meeting, I'm not sure, I don't think we have anything for July first as of yet.
Okay, so that would work for staff if we do get a favorable vote on this?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, was there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Melissa. Frank, discussion?
I got a little carried aware earlier, I'm sure I said most of my piece. I would like to make sure, have some assurances that this is going to address some of the neighborhood compatibility issues that I think we all agree might be there. Again, from what I can read so far, without a work session on it, getting a full understanding of how this is, what sections of this are meant to be addressing what problems and how they're addressing those problems is what I'd really like to understand, and I think we all should understand before we enact something. At the same time, I am cognizant of the fact that without these kinds of regulations or without this kind of an ordinance, we have many more problems with compatibility than we otherwise would. So, I'm cognizant of that, I just would like to get that addressed to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, or at least taking the right step.
Frank, does your motion include a work session for the July one meeting?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and that's okay with the second, Melissa? Further, Richard?
So, if we have a work session on July one, will this proposed ordinance be ready for a council decision? Will we come back with a further, I'm just trying to get the scenario here, another public hearing and then a vote of council? Is that right? And then a second reading, probably not until August? Is that, is that the way this would work?
Yeah, I think if you do a work session on July first, you could probably do a first reading on July fifteenth, second reading at the first meeting in August to take effect at the beginning of September. That's probably the soonest that this would occur. Although, just so you know, the Affordable Housing IZ takes effect July third, I believe. So, there'll be a two-month difference between that and this, and that was one of the main concerns coming from a lot of the people at the Housing Steering Committee, is that this was right on the heels of the inclusionary zoning. So, that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we had, was so that these two could be hand-in-hand when we move forward with approvals for inclusionary zoning. That's the only thing I want to share, I know that came up from, you know, various people at the steering committee, so.
Is there a way to shorten that timeline from July one? Just if we could move it up, based on Frank's suggestion, could we move it up another two weeks earlier?
Well, I think we could probably, we have probably about an hour, we're going to review emergency operations plan and crisis communication plan at the next meeting. We could probably do that in an hour. That would leave us an hour to do this if we wanted to, then that would again be a first reading July one, second reading July fifteenth, take effect August fifteenth.
I think it's important that, because I think Adam's right, these things have to go hand-in-hand, and if we have too much delay between them, then implementation of inclusionary zoning would be more difficult, if not impossible. Would it be still possible to implement the IZ?
It's possible. You know, multifamily buildings that don't require a conditional use permit won't have any approval other than the Architectural Review Committee. That's basically, and then, you know, anything that we're approving administratively, all we'll have is the conditional use permit standards to look at without having these additional standards. It's hard to see how many projects are going to come forward, but.
I was just going to add too, as part of the multi, or the mixed-use standards that Dave helped put together, there's also kind of non-residential, we got a bunch of commercial projects that are kind of coming down the pike that could really benefit from these standards being in place.
And when are those going to be coming through the planning board and council?
Well, I don't know, they will be coming through the planning board and council. This will be the thing that will ensure good design.
Okay. Andy?
I'm going to vote against the motion, I think we should pass this on a first reading tonight. I'm not fully comfortable with it, but we pass emergency ordinances all the time to deal with things that are impending and in our headlights and we're about to run over. The argument against that is that then we don't fix it, and I understand that because that is something that we do at times, but I would say we could go ahead and pass this, go through our second reading, at least half has something they can work with, and then we do make sure that we have our workshop and we make those amendments as quickly as possible. Because we could lose the entire summer, and I think Wendy's right, we may end up in a spot where we don't have anything to work with. And I looked through the comments that Frank forwarded today, and I kind of listened to some of the things that Mary had tonight. I didn't get a chance to read all of her submittal. One of the things that I have a concern with is what I know the arguments are coming through is people want to make this an entirely objective process, and we're never going to be able to do that, it's always going to have a certain amount of subjectivity to it. And if we're going to sit down and try and make it that, then we're never going to pass anything, and that's my concern, and I see that's where we're trying to head with this, and that would be what I'd be worried about, so. But I'm going to vote against the motion.
Frank, does your motion still imply a work session for July first with a first reading of the second meeting in July, or would you like to bump that up to where we have a work session on the seventeenth of June with a first reading of the ordinance July first?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I'm not sure how the proper process for this is. I would be willing, I'm, as I said, I'm, as I said earlier, I'm cognizant of the fact that we need to get something in place. Nothing is, this is better than nothing, it may not be perfect, but it's better than nothing. Given what Wendy's told us this evening, that there is a number of projects that could benefit between now and July for having something like this in place, I'm, I would be happy to withdraw my motion to table if I could also get a commitment from this council that we will have a work session on July one or before, earlier of the next meeting, on this issue, and then begin to work through the, any amendments we might want to what we would pass this evening. I would be willing to withdraw the motion to table if that, if I could get that kind of a commitment from this council. Otherwise, I may lose anyway, but I don't, understood.
Is that okay with the second to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
And I think it is important that we do go ahead and schedule a work session on this, that was going to be one of my suggestions before we went to a public hearing, and I agree with Frank that it still would be a requirement. That motion has been withdrawn to postpone, we will now need a motion, a new motion. Andy?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen, aren't we? Nineteen dash thirteen on a first reading. And I'm not sure if I can actually, Angie would probably be a better help with this, if I could go ahead and condition that, subject to, if possible, a second reading, not until July first at an earliest, and work session on June seventeen.
Can you clarify that?
So, basically, what I would be saying is we would go ahead and approve on a first reading tonight, a second reading could not take place prior to us having a work session and making the necessary amendments and corrections.
Which we can do on the seventeenth of June.
Which we could have a work session and then have. If we're comfortable, we could have a second reading on the seventeenth, or if we needed two more weeks, we could go to July first.
Okay, so the difference there would be we're lagging two weeks behind IZ or four weeks, depending on our comfort level after a work session.
Correct, correct.
You're comfortable with that, Ange?
But no second reading prior to workshop and amendments to make everybody happy?
I'll second.
No, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Williams, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, Michelle. Thank you. We'll move on to item seven A, which is communications from our planning and building director. Doug is also here in the audience if you have any questions. Item seven A, consideration to approve a request from Louise Fisher for a four-lot minor subdivision referred to as Bear Paw located at ten fifty-five State Park Road. Wendy?
Okay, so this is a request for preliminary plat for four-lot subdivision. The property is a little less than an acre. It'll be accessed by a private road along the north side of the project with a sidewalk on the south side of the road. The road will terminate in a T in her turnaround instead of a cul-de-sac, and then all four lots will access off this private road. The applicant is also requesting a subdivision variance to only put a sidewalk on the south side of the road. No frontage improvements are going to be made on State Park Road because they're being installed as part of the resort tax project, phase two with that. They will pay a fee in lieu of installing a sidewalk along State Park Road and cash in lieu of parkland dedication. Again, the property is located at one thousand fifty-five State Park Road, it's zone WR2. We did notice adjacent landowners placed a sign on the property, and we didn't receive any comments on this. We review these according to the criteria in the subdivision regulations. Just to hit some of the highlights, the fire marshal has reviewed the plans and is satisfied with the hammerhead T turnaround, and they, he will also review the placement and design of the new hydrants. The property is forested and will be served by city water, it's on the east side of State Park Road next to the golf course. The fire department will review emergency access, and the fire marshal has recommended compliance with the urban wildland interface standards for both buildings and property. This private road will be a fifty-foot wide private road, our standard public street is sixty feet, as you know. Traffic generation is forty trips per day, so no traffic study was required because you need two hundred trips before that kicks in. The subdivision's within the urban area and should not impact wildlife or wildlife habitat. It's not located within a high groundwater area. A stormwater plan will be required to be submitted to the Public Works Department for review and approval. The property does slope upward toward the golf course from State Park Road. There's some areas between ten and thirty percent, and our subdivision regulations state that you need some sort of a geotech letter, which was submitted along with the packet. The report found that there's no appreciable engineering risk to the proposed development, but did recommend a geotech engineering for future building construction, so we did recommend that as a condition of approval. The project will be served by city water and sewer, and then under roads, again, they're going to be doing a T turnaround, which will be installed between lots three and four, and they're requesting a variance just to have a sidewalk on the south side of the road. The road is a twenty-four-foot wide rural road section with twenty feet of asphalt and swales on both sides. The property does front on phase two of the State Park Road reconstruction. The road is substandard, so Public Works is requesting a ten-foot right-of-way dedication along there. For these sizes subdivisions, eleven percent of the net area of the lots goes for parkland dedication. Because of the small size of it, they're going to pay a fee in lieu, and the park board did recommend cash in lieu of the land dedication. The project complies with the growth policy, the zoning, and the subdivision regulations. Under reviewing the variance request, we kind of follow the same sort of format the Board of Adjustments does, that the no variance can be granted unless the council finds the conditions are met or not pertinent to the particular case. So, again, the standard that they're requesting the variance from is that sidewalks are required on both sides of the street. So, under the first criteria, the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. The subdivision is a four-lot subdivision, and the sidewalk that they're proposing is just going to be right immediately adjacent to those lots. And then it'll go out to State Park. The pedestrian access on that section of State Park hasn't been determined yet, it hasn't been designed, but it'll provide access out to that street for folks. This property is unique because it cannot be extended further east because of the golf course, so locating a sidewalk on the north side doesn't serve anyone, and it isn't a benefit to the community. The applicant's not claiming a personal or financial hardship, and both the sidewalk and roads will be privately installed and maintained, so there's no increase in public costs, and the variance is not going to put the subdivision into nonconformity. So, staff is recommending approval of this variance request. We're also recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to twenty-one conditions in your packet. Just some of the highlights of these conditions, a lot of the standard subdivision requirements, but the private road needs to be named using our city naming conventions, working with the city clerk for addressing and street naming, cash in lieu of parkland in the amount of eleven percent of the net area, tree retention plan must be submitted, and that was one of the maps that you folks received in your packet showing the trees that they've gone out there and measured, there's a few of them that can be retained on-site. They need to install a sidewalk on the south side, pay cash in lieu of sidewalk, dedicate ten feet of additional right-of-way, and submit geotechnical reports with each building permit. And that's about it. Any questions for you?
Thanks, Wendy.
Google map if you want to see where it sits in the.
Any questions for Wendy on this item? Richard?
Snow removal is always an issue, or snow storage, is there any provision there?
That is part of the engineering plans review, I'm sure Doug could probably talk about that as well, and Craig could probably talk about how they review that.
Okay, secondly, the road itself is private, private maintenance. Will the public be able to use it at all? And therefore, since it's private, however, would the subdivision be able to gate it?
No.
No. Does that need to be a condition?
I mean, we could add that as a note on the face of the plat, it is a requirement of the subdivision regulations, but no subdivision, since two thousand nine, that's been a requirement.
Okay.
Could add that to condition number nineteen.
Rather than add condition twenty-two?
Yeah, I mean, because we could just put it on the face of the plat. That'd be a good thing to have on the face of the plat, that the road is open to the public and can never be gated.
Okay. That's it.
Motion?
Don't we have a public hea, no, we don't have a public hearing.
No public hearing on this item?
No public hearing.
Sure, I'll go ahead. And move to approve a request from Louise Fisher for a four lot minor subdivision known as Bear Paw located at ten fifty-five State Park Road, subject to a modification to condition nineteen. And that is that on the face of the plat would indicate that the road is, in fact, open to the public and no gates permitted.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, providing it also includes the variance request to subdivision regulation twelve dash four dash seventeen.
Is that implied with your motion, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, that was seconded by Counselor Fury. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle? Thanks for coming tonight. Good luck with the project. And we'll move on to item eight A, which is consideration to authorize to contract for the design of the water source and treatment capacity expansion project. Ryan and Jeff are here from Morrison and Merrily, and I just wanted to indicate I thought your proposal was very well put together and spot on, so appreciate the time and effort you put into preparing that for the city of Whitefish. On that note, Craig?
I'll just say that the consultant selection committee agrees with that, and that is what this staff report is based on. I think we've already talked about it a few times this evening, but as everyone's aware, the city does own and operate a water treatment facility that's capable of producing four million gallons a day of potable water. DEQ has recently informed the city that they will be prohibiting any water main extension subdivisions or MFE applications due to concerns that we're approaching the threshold for water production. They further require that we provide a capacity assessment and deviation requests for them to review in order to accept future projects. While we've worked very hard and we have submitted many of the documents that DEQ has requested, we also realize the final solution will entail an expansion of the city's water treatment plant. In nineteen ninety, city council did adopt a policy for the selection of consultants for services that are in excess of MCA eighteen eight dash two twelve, which is currently set at fifty thousand dollars. This project will exceed that amount, so we did go forth and do an RFP for this project. In addition to the actual expansion of the water plant, there are several other elements that will need to be accomplished to expand capacity. We anticipate an extension of the Whitefish Lake intake structure going out into the lake. We anticipate expansion of the pump station down to the lake as well as installation of a parallel water main and sanitary sewer main extension in order to accommodate backwash at the expanded water treatment plant. So in accordance with our consultant selection policy, we did advertise for proposals. Advertisements were placed in the pilot on the seventeenth of April as well as the twenty-fourth of April earlier this year, and proposals were due on May third. We received two proposals for the project, Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, or AE2S, as well as Morrison Merrily. While both firms are clearly qualified to complete and get, to complete the work, it is the unanimous recommendation that we move forward with Morrison Merrily. We were extremely impressed with the research that they completed in order to get themselves up to speed on the project, and in particular, the background and skill set of the lead designer. Selection committee was also more comfortable with the lead designer from Morrison and Merrily being based out of Helena as opposed to the lead designer from AE2S, who is in North Dakota. Morrison and Merrily's local office staff is considerably more robust than AE2S. Therefore, they would be able to be on site in case of problems that could arise during construction. They're also happy to attend staff meetings and council meetings, as you can see. Finally, it was the general consensus of the selection committee that Morrison Merrily simply put more time and effort and energy into the preparation of their proposal and interviewed quite well. So based on that information, it is the recommendation that the city manager be authorized to execute a contract with Morrison and Merrily to complete the water source and treatment capacity expansion project.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig on his staff report? We will need a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve consideration to authorize contract for the design of the water source treatment capacity expansion project. And if I get a second, I'll just discuss it briefly.
To Morrison and Merrily?
To Morrison and Merrily, sorry.
Oh, second. Seconded by Counselor Pennon. Richard?
I had the honor and privilege of sitting in on that committee, selection committee, and I agree with everything that Craig said. Morrison Merrily did an outstanding job of presenting their case, as did AE2S, but I think that the city is going to be well-served with hiring Morrison Merrily.
Thank you, Richard. Further comments on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously, Michelle. So we're going to hold you to it. You guys have to be here once a month.
Twice a month.
In their proposal, it said once a month.
Oh, once a month.
Thanks. We'll stay with Craig and move on to item eight B, which is consideration to award the State Park Road reconstruction project, which will be Phase One, scheduled for two thousand nineteen. Craig?
Yes, good evening. So Public Works staff has completed the bidding for Phase One of the State Park Road reconstruction project. This will reconstruct State Park Road from Lion Mountain Loop Road to Haugen Heights Road. There have been three newsletters and two public meetings held so far on the project, and council was presented with preliminary designs back in November of two thousand eighteen, and staff was authorized to proceed with final designs in April. A total of four bids were received on the project and opened on May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Based on concerns raised during public meetings, staff wanted to get an accurate representation of what the project would cost without the proposed detour. So with that in mind, we did have two additive alternates on the project. The base bid for the project assumed no traffic control. Additive alternate number one includes the cost to implement a detour on the route, which will remove all public traffic from State Park Road during construction. And then additive alternate two includes the traffic control necessary to maintain traffic along the roadway. In other words, no detour would be permitted. The bid tab is included in my staff report in your packets, and the base bids with additive alternate number one, which is the detour, ranged from twenty point nine percent to nine percent, nine point seven percent lower than the engineer's estimate. Sandry Construction was the low bidder for additive alternate number one at one million three hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. The base bid with additive alternate number two, which is no detour, ranged from sixteen point six percent below the engineer's estimate to twenty-eight point six percent above the engineer's estimate. LHC was the low bidder for additive alternate number two at one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents. The State Park Road reconstruction project is slated to be paid for out of the resort tax fund, and the overall project budget is five point three million dollars. Both of the low bids were from reputable firms and fall within the budget for the project. So with that in mind, I think there are several options on how to award the project. We could, council could, accept the bids and award with additive alternate number one to Sandry Construction. That is the alternate with the detour. Council could accept the bids and award base bid with additive alter number two to LHC, which is without the detour. Or you could reject all bids and rebid at a later date. Although the detour will be an inconvenience, I do not feel that the additional hundred and eighty thousand dollars is warranted on this project. I think that whether the detour is in place or not, motorists will find a detour, locals especially will find a route around and will be using a detour. I also feel that if we were to try and build this project under traffic, there's going to be a considerable number of dust complaints from the residents along State Park Road that we wouldn't have to deal with had it, if it were to be built with a detour. So with that in mind, it is my recommendation that council accept the bids and award the project with additive alternate number one to Sandry Construction for one million three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig? We will need a motion based on Craig's recommendation contained in the staff report. Andy, thank you.
Need a microphone, though. I would move to award the State Park Road's first section to Sandry Construction. I'm fumbling here a little bit. Under additive alternate number one, the amount not to exceed one million three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Nice alliteration in that.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, Michelle. Thanks, Craig. We'll move on to item nine A. You have Adam's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for our city manager? Adam, anything additional to report on?
Nope, just with the added work session. We'll be starting at five o'clock, June seventeenth.
All right. Thanks, Adam. And just a reminder, we have our budget meeting next Monday, June tenth at five thirty, right here in council chambers. Communications from mayor and city councilors, and we'll start with Richard, if you don't mind.
I haven't seen anything yet. I checked with Explorer Whitefish, but the end of the month, I had breakfast with a group of seven bloggers who were visiting from various parts of the country, Chicago, Seattle, San Francisco. And I expect they'll be writing about Whitefish in the very near future. Today, I had the honor of being the elected representative for two groups of second graders who came to City Hall. Big shout out to the staff and particularly to Parks and Rec, who came up with the idea for a scavenger hunt. And then Michelle, who was, don't take this wrong, but you were a great mother hen to keep everything going. And the kids had a great time, and they all got to sit up here at the diocese, and it was. So if anybody's looking for that same opportunity on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, it's not a very onerous task, but spend a little bit of time here in the afternoon from one to two forty-five with second graders.
This week.
This week, the last week of school, there is energy beyond compare. But the staff did an excellent job of putting this all together and making all these kids welcome. It was really wonderful. But on a more serious note, I've really been thinking hard about this concert that's coming up July twelfth, I think it is. Is that correct, about then? And the expectation of perhaps as many as ten thousand additional visitors or people attending that concert. I want to be sure that our emergency preparedness, emergency response plan is fully functional and up to date, ready for that event. I think it's not just Whitefish. It's going to be Columbia Falls, Kalispell, and the county that will all be impacted, whether it be from police, fire, emergency services. I'm reminded that I'm of an age of Woodstock, and who knows what happens when you have a big outdoor concert. Certainly, we have some ideas. Nonetheless, I would like to see that, and then also be able to track the costs of that preparedness. This is not going to come without some costs, I'm sure, to not only, again, not only Whitefish and our emergency services and police, fire, but other communities as well, but certainly I would like to know what this is going to cost or will cost retrospectively, the city of Whitefish, if we can track as much of that as possible. And, I mean, just check the hotels. They're booked out. We found that out. You know, if the Big Mountains booked out for that weekend, we know everybody else is probably. That's it.
Thanks, Richard. Andy?
We can track costs. We should track revenue, too, then, in all fairness.
Oh, absolutely.
First of all, I'd make a motion to appoint Leck, is it Naumovich?
I think so.
To the, I maybe didn't say that right, to the Flathead Conservation District Board of Supervisors.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? Thanks to Lori for serving on the city's behalf the last number of years, but she's moved on to a supervisory position, so she got a promotion at the district. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And Leck is our new appointee to the FCD. Anything else, Sandy?
Yeah, I have a question for the chief and the chief down there, and it was a question asked of me the other day by a citizen. Now, Missoula has, for emergency preparedness and for any kind of disaster planning, you can give people your phone number at either the fire department or the police department. In the event there's some kind of bad thing that happens in the train yard or a road gets closed or something, we sent out an automated robot text and goes and notifies all that people that have signed up for that service. Is that something that's possible for us? Is it something we want to look into? It seemed like a pretty good idea to me. I mean, do we want to talk to Missoula and ask them about it?
Andy, we've looked at that from the nine-one-one board. It's voluntary.
Yeah.
And, you know, we are trying to get it funded, and hopefully, within the next six months, we will have it funded as a nine-one-one center.
Awesome.
So that's where we are on it.
Good. I will let that person know. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Ryan?
Nothing.
Thanks, Ryan. Katie?
Nothing.
Thanks, Katie. Frank?
I would like to revisit once again our inclusionary zoning issues, and at least raise for this council another issue that I have, I think is probably appropriate, taken up as an amendment to what we've passed on a second reading this evening. One of the things that we allow under our inclusionary zoning or the Legacy Homes program is for what's referred to as administrative approvals of the projects as they come through when they qualify. This is a first step for us in a large measure as a city and a community. We've always had public process associated with any kind of interesting developments, I'll call. I think a, I would like for us to consider or review again whether or not we, rather than a pure, what I'll call purely administrative approval for these projects, that we treat them similarly as we would the lake shore protection permits that we get on a regular basis. They would come through as part of our, as our, part of our consent agenda with the opportunity for council to review the matter as it comes through on a timely basis. And either pull it if we felt necessary to review the administrative process or to, or to pass it on. My thought is, I'm not trying to add time or other inhibitions to using this process or inviting our Legacy Homes program to be successful for both the citizens and for, and for the development community, but it also would give us a better handle on, on a timely, very timely basis, what projects are coming through, how are conditions a timely, very timely basis, what projects are coming through, how our conditions, our administrative conditions are being administered, and how they're having, what impact they're having, actual impacts they're having on the communities that they're going into. There's no other provision in these, in these ordinances that would, by statute or otherwise, give this council that kind of timely review, or at least sighting of each of these projects as they came through. And so I'd like for us to, if I can get some nods, for us to review with planning staff how that would work, or how that could work, under this program. Am I making sense?
Yeah, my concern with that, Frank, is that we just had the ordinance 19-10 on our consent agenda this evening, and that did pass.
Agreed.
So one suggestion would be to put the ordinance in play, and perhaps revisit this issue after we've seen a few months of engagement with this program, rather than initiate that now before we even know if it's gonna be something that's required.
My concern is that we won't necessarily, there's no structure for us to be so informed or see how it goes if we're not involved or not timely made aware of each of these projects and the process for the administration, and how that's administered. If we want to do that, if we don't wanna do it through amending this, maybe we could require as part of staffs to bring us timely information on each of the projects that are coming through as they're approved administratively or not, and the process, and what they saw and what they didn't see. I would like to have, because I think it's important, again, this is an opportunity, a first impression for this community, and a way of dealing with this kind of development. And so I think it would be very helpful for the, for us to be involved, or at least have the ongoing timely information on what's really going on.
Dave, is that something you can address here tonight?
Well, with the conditional use permit, I mean, the requirement in our code that if we change it from an administrative, that it has to go to the planning board first and the city council, you know, and the steering committee, the reason why we made it administrative, number one was because the strategic housing plan called for expedited permitting for these kinds of projects to encourage them. And also, we lowered the threshold of, like in the WR4, there's no requirement for any kind of conditional use permit for any multifamily whatsoever, and we established a threshold that was, you know, a minimal one for administrative review, and then a greater one for a full conditional use permit. So I don't know that we have a process in place where the city council will be able to review a conditional use permit without it being a full conditional use permit, and having to go to planning board for their input as well, without somehow modifying our code, and I don't know how much of that's based on state law with regard to how we notify and public hearings involved with a conditional use permit. So that's, and we're happy, when we issue an administrative conditional use permit for these kinds of projects, we can CC you guys on the approval, you guys can take a look at it, so you can, you know, sort of monitor what we're looking at. I don't know how many of these we're even gonna get right away.
Right.
I have a feeling it might be a while before we see much, but.
If we would, I would be, I could clearly live with, at least on a short-term, timely information as these things come in, David, and circulating the documents to us so we understand what's going on, and to see what kind of neighborhood input we're getting, and to see how that's being dealt with. As long as we, administratively, we can do that as part of this process, and we'll do it. I'm perfectly happy with that as the short-term fix.
And I'd just say that you can pretty much guarantee that if staff errors, and I don't think you will, you're gonna hear about it.
No, I know.
Then that would be the opportunity to bring it back.
Yeah.
But I think this is a reasonable, you know, request at this time, and let's see how the ordinance plays out, but I think reporting would be great back to the council. But trust me, we'll hear about it pretty quickly if something happens that the neighbors don't typically care for, so. Thanks, Frank. Melissa?
I was just gonna ask Craig if he could give a little update about the sewage treatment plant, or odors coming from the plant.
Yeah, it was actually on my list for staff comments. I guess let me just start out by saying it's been a pretty bad turnover this year out at the wastewater treatment plant. We do, on an annual basis, expect to see what's called a seasonal turnover. It actually happens twice a year during temperature inversions, typically a longer one in the spring and then a shorter one in the fall. And what's happening, when the ice comes off the lagoon and the temperatures change, we essentially get an inversion where the cooler water from the bottom is warming up and it comes to the surface, and with it, this may be more information than you guys want, but I know Mr. Owens left, but maybe he's listening. It brings with it some of the anaerobic, undigested sludge that's at the bottom of the wastewater lagoon, and we know that there's a considerable amount down there, and that's why we're working on upgrading the facility. During the day, it comes up, and then when it cools, it drops, and so during the period of inversion in the spring, until the temperature really stabilizes in the lagoon, we get this kind of daily mixing of the wastewater pond, and that's what creates the odors. We've been working really hard to try and reduce the turnover event this year. We've been recycling treated water from the finished stage of the wastewater plant back into the entry of the lagoon. We've been adding additional chemical, what we call, it's a probiotic, it's similar to, you know, what a human would ingest to try and get digestion, you know, in your own digestion system. It does the same thing in a wastewater lagoon, it essentially feeds the bugs and gets the metabolic system working. We've doubled or even tripled the dosage of probiotic. We are seeing improvement. I think that in the last week, the temperature has stabilized in the lagoon in cell one, and we have noticed an improvement in the odors. That said, there's still a radius of influence directly around the wastewater treatment plant where people still are affected, and those are the comments that we're still getting. So, I guess I just want to assure people that we're doing everything we can. Unfortunately, with a lagoon system, the tools and the toolbox are pretty limited. We are at the finishing stages of designing the new wastewater treatment plant. We expect to be under construction later this year, and have the new plant operational in the spring of 2021, so we're also working as quickly as we can to get the new plant up and running.
Just one other question, quick question. So, does increased volume, flow, usage, waste, does that make the problem worse, or is it not necessarily related to?
You know, what we're dealing with in the lagoon right now is, you know, about 20 years' worth of sediment, and so as part of the project that we're doing, we will be taking all the sludge that remains in the lagoon and disposing of it and drying it, and it'll then be a treated biosolid, so. Yeah, there's some effect based on the increased volume, but it's been increasing at the rate that we expect it to, you know, kind of roughly that 5% per year over the last 20 years, so that number was calculated into, you know, the expected life of the lagoon system.
Okay. Thanks, Craig.
Adam?
Make sure that it's clear, we're gonna have one more year of this, so just so you know when you start to get the calls next year, but after that, hopefully, it's done.
Thanks. Thanks, Melissa. Frank?
And just to be clear, I want the public to know, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, when we discovered, or not discovered, when we started having this problem a year or two ago, which we've been having, and this is nothing new, we did in fact reach out to consultants and to engineers to help us come up with a plan for the interim. We didn't Terry and say, oh, we're not gonna bother with this. We in fact went out, hired consultants, brought them in, and asked them, what can we do with this project, process in the interim to make it better? And we're trying to follow those things, and so I think the public needs to understand, we're not, nobody's trying to bury this or put perfume on it, because it doesn't work. We're doing everything the engineers and the consultants have told us we can do, given the system we're dealing with, so.
Exactly correct. Thanks, Frank. Richard?
One additional item. One additional item that I nearly omitted, and all of you had a copy of a letter that we prepared to Senators Tester and Danes encouraging them to fully fund with dedicated funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. That still languishes in the Congress and the Senate, and we continue to encourage full funding. We have had good support from both Senators Tester and Danes, but I think it's important that we keep pushing that forward. If you all are in agreement with that, I'm gonna send the original down the diocese with an item for you to sign.
Thank you for putting that together, Richard. Assume everyone's comfortable signing onto the letter. I will not be here at the June 17th meeting. I have to head to Colorado for work. Good luck, Richard. Apologies. One thing I did wanna bring up tonight, and it kind of stemmed from a meeting we had on the 93 South Corridor Study. It's very disappointing from my perspective when the county went through with rezoning a lot of the SAG-5 and residentially zoned properties just south of our border to essentially a business service district. There was a very well-put-together report, I would say, that attempted to at least mitigate the impacts by adopting many of Whitefish's design standards, you know, related to lighting, signage, landscaping, highway access setbacks, to name a few. That zoning went into effect, and it's just disappointing to me to see the lack of oversight by Flathead County, and I'm specifically referring to the Whitefish Marine business and expansion that just occurred, and this is no offense to Whitefish Marine. I think they're a great business for Whitefish. Certainly, a demand for that, excuse me, oh, sorry. Certainly, a demand for their type of services, but it's just a bit disappointing that we went through this entire process. We were promised that these design standards, and once this corridor plan was adopted, that they would adhere to it, and they clearly have not, and someone somewhere dropped the ball, from my perspective. It got us today in our steering committee thinking about our policy regarding annexation, and whether we want to extend our extension of services plan, you know, south of Highway 40, possibly to Blanchard. There was a suggestion today at the meeting by Tom Gents that we should probably consider extending that all the way to Happy Valley, following suit with what Kalispell's done over the last 10 years with their aggressive extension of services plan. And the reason I say that is, you're going to have businesses like Whitefish Marine that clearly could do their development without city services. They didn't need our water, they didn't need our sewer, they were able to expand. You've got other businesses out there that are probably in the same situation. You've got the hotel out at the airport, and the entire airport that's on septic. They're not on city services, so. Inevitably, if we make that policy decision, which I think we need to think very seriously about over the next year, I think we also have to come to the realization that we're not gonna get everything in. There's gonna be businesses that require our services and others that don't, and that's just a kind of a hard reality that we realized today. But, that was my only editorial this evening, just a bit disappointing to see that the county didn't follow through with their commitment to honoring our gateway and our important entrance to this town. And again, that's certainly no offense to Whitefish Marine whatsoever. With that said, is there further staff comments tonight about council? Not seeing any, we are adjourned. Thanks.